I haven't been here in awhile.
Yeah, I've seen you a couple meetings.
Holidays and... I have. I've been calling her like all the time.
Um, are they not on?
Your name is on it.
Oh yeah, we've talked about this.
Oh geez, the whole row's off.
That's a great spot. The other spot is you can try to get his attention into the night.
Oh, they are.
Just saying, I'd like to suggest an agenda for tonight.
Apparently you like that seat.
On channel eight.
They think it was still us?
Same for me, right? Oh, I already signed that, right? Oh, you want to do it?
So, are you about ready? Are we working? We got no lights up here also.
You know what happened is that the Water District meeting probably...
We'll go ahead and get the meeting started. Thank you, residents of Capitola, for coming to the meeting of January 8th. And we'll begin this meeting with a roll call.
Councilmember Harland.
Here.
Councilmember Bertrand.
Here.
Councilmember Termini.
Here.
Vice Mayor Bortorf.
Here. And Councilmember Bertrand, can you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I told you I was gonna kill you.
Yes.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first thing we have on the agenda tonight is a couple presentations. So if we can get started, I'd like to make a presentation for Andy Snow. So if I can get... Let me go to the portable mic. I think we have a large group here. I'm looking for Andy's wife Laura. Come on up here. Son Zach, Justin Brown, Theresa Green, and Lori Hill, are you here? Why don't you come on up? I want you to stand right over here, okay? Our camera's right up there. Okay?
Okay.
And this is Zach.
This is Diane, Andy's son Zach.
Zach, nice to meet you. You are... Justin Brown, nice to meet you. Sir?
Wally Evans.
Wally Evans, nice to meet you. And we have Lori Hill, past president of the Begonia Festival, and Theresa Green, current president of the Begonia Festival. And today, the camera's up there, so you can all look up there. Today, we'd like to make a proclamation, a mayor's proclamation, recognizing this is Andy's day in memory of Andy Snow. City of Capitola wishes to express his wife Laura and son Zach our deepest sorrow for the passing of Andy on Sunday, November 20th, 2014. The first annual Begonia Festival took place here in Capitola in 1954. Our resident historian Carolyn Swift has said that the festival is as close to the Capitola city history as the shore is to the bay. So it doesn't get much closer. It's a very special event in our town. For the last thirty years, Andy Snow has devoted his life to these begonias. He was in charge of breeding, propagating, planting, harvesting the tuberous begonia crop every year for the Golden State Bulb Company. Andy started at Brown's Bull Ranch in Capitola, loading and unloading hundred-pound sacks of tulips, and in the time of his passing was the facilities and greenhouse manager of the Golden State Bull Growers and Moss Landing. He created scented begonias and unique bi-colored Cote begonia strains. What is that word?
Picardy.
Picardy. I do know one thing. I know that he made or contributed to the white ones, which were the only ones we were able to get the scent or the color off of our hands. So thank you for that color. Andy was born in Charlotte, Michigan. He was a world traveler, a horticulturist, and a devoted husband and father, as well as an accomplished martial art, longtime biking enthusiast, and a wonderful cook who grew much of his own produce, enjoying a long career in the greenhouse and plant propagation, beginning with a stint as a gardener in the Governor's Garden in Darwin, Australia. Andy was dedicated to growing and improving begonias and hoped that the Begonia Festival would celebrate Capitola's history of growing begonias for many more years to come. Now therefore, I, Ed Bortorf, acting for Dennis Norton as mayor of the City of Capitola, and on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim the city gratefully extends their sincere appreciation to Andy Snow for significant contribution to Capitola. And we have this proclamation I'd like to present to you. Would you like to say a few words?
Sure. I wish Andy could be here. I wish this had happened in his lifetime. I believe he's here in spirit. I know he would be grateful, not just for your recognition of his efforts, but because he really loved tuberous begonias and he really believed in them as a beautiful thing. And I hope that they can continue on for many years, not just through the festival, but through people growing them and appreciating the beauty that they truly have. He thought they were the ideal container plant, and as a gardener, I would say that is really true. And so I hope that can continue on for a lot of people getting a lot of joy out of the tuberous begonias. And thank you for acknowledging the work that he did.
Thank you, and thank you for Andy's service.
Would you like to say a few words, Zach?
You don't have to.
Not really.
You don't have to, okay.
Thank you. He was my friend.
He was your friend?
That's right.
That's what we're saying. Yeah, Andy was my friend.
Andy was my friend.
Good enough compliment. Justin, anything you'd like to say?
Yeah, I'd just like to say that Andy's contribution to the bulb industry and tuberous begonias in general will go on for considerable number of years because he was a breeder. So a lot of what he's been working on, a lot of it's yet even to be commercialized. So he'll live with us through these varieties that are gonna be on the market going into the future. So just wanted to say that.
Great. Thank you, Justin. Lori, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Protem, for doing this proclamation on behalf of the city and on behalf of the Begonia Festival. We had the pleasure of meeting Andy Snow maybe eight years ago. He invited us to the annual vendor fair that Golden State Bulb puts on each year. And what we were welcomed with was a greenhouse full of blooming begonias in April. And if any of you know anything about begonias, they don't bloom in April. In fact, they're just generally just starting. I do want to acknowledge that there are other committee members out there, Begonia Festival committee members, and I'd like to give the microphone to Theresa, our president.
Okay, I'll just have a few more comments. Laura, Zach, Justin, happy that you could make it here tonight. On behalf of the Begonia Festival Committee, we offer our condolences to you. We loved Andy's passion, his spirit, his dedication to the growing of begonias and making them more beautiful. And we will surely miss him as part of the festival. I would like to present to you a photograph. This picture was taken this last year at the vendor fair at Golden State Bulb. Many of us at the Begonia Festival went down to the vendor fair and were toured around there by Andy. And we took this picture, and we just love it. And we wanted you to have it. Thank you.
Your proclamation. Thank you very much.
If you guys are interested in Andy's thoughts about begonias, he wrote a blog. It was called "Begonias in the Mist," and that was a purposeful title. I'm a writer. I understand these things. And if you go to Begonias in the Mist or to begoniafields.com, which is a blogspot site, you can read, oh, at least twenty blog posts that he wrote about breeding begonias. There are some very beautiful pictures of Capitola Begonia Festival and just his thoughts about what begonias really were. And some of it's very philosophical, and some of it is very practical. And if you got any interest in anything like that, he put a lot of what he felt into that. So I would suggest, if you truly have any interest in who Andy was and what he did, that you go there.
Thank you very much. Begonias in the mist again, that is, so take a look at that for some inspiration. Thank you very much, Laura.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for honoring Andy.
It's our pleasure. Our next presentation is an award for Derek Van Alsteyn. You want to come up, Derek, for a serving on the... in recognition of serving on the Capitola Architectural and Site Committee?
I got a certificate of appreciation for Derek Van Alsteyn. That's for you. Just a couple words. It's my pleasure to introduce Derek Van Alsteyn and to recognize his years of service on the city's Architectural Site and Review Committee. Derek is a respected local designer who has been designing attractive homes in Santa Cruz County for over thirty years. Derek's work includes numerous architectural gems in Capitola and many historic remodels, which have significantly enhanced Capitola's architectural character. Derek accepted this appointment to the Arkenside Committee in 2012. He has an intimate understanding of Capitola's community character and a keen eye for design, and has been a tremendous asset to the Arkenside Committee. Derek routinely provided homeowners with constructive advice to improve in design and successfully navigate the permitting process, which sometimes can be a challenge. Derek brought a calm, thoughtful, and collaborative approach to his committee, and his sharp sense of humor was always operated by staff and homeowners alike. So on behalf of the City of Capitola, I want to thank you for your invaluable contributions to the community and the countless hours you've dedicated to the Arkenside Committee. Thank you, Derek. Appreciate your time.
Next, we have Community Developmenter Rish Kano. Do you have an introduction of Brian Van San, our new city building official?
I do. Good evening, Vice Mayor, council members. It is my pleasure this evening to introduce Brian Van San as the city's new building official. As many of you know, Brian has served as the building inspector for the city for the past four years, where he acquired invaluable experience performing building plan checks, plan, building inspections, and providing daily assistance to our customers at the counter. Brian is a Capitola resident, and he has a keen understanding of the community, very good technical skills, and a dedication to providing top-notch customer service, all of which will provide him with the foundation necessary to be a highly effective building official. So with that, I want to congratulate Brian, and I think I speak for all of us when I say we look forward to working with him in his new capacity for many years to come.
First, I would just like to thank the City Council for their continued support and confidence in me. I would also like to thank city staff for the same. They also provided a great deal of help and assistance. I'm very privileged and honored to have this position. I do not take it lightly. And I look forward to many, many, many years of serving this great community and its even greater citizens. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brian. Don't go away, Brian. Don't go away. Couple comments. You know, you're a great asset to the city, and we're really privileged to have you taking on this position, and we're all proud of you for doing that. Any other councilmen with comments?
Are they gonna make you wear that tie every day now?
I hope not.
Don't stand for that.
I would, once again, thank you very much, and I appreciate that.
Congratulations. You've been doing a wonderful job, and I know you'll continue to. Just, I'm so thrilled for you and so happy for you.
Thank you. Thank you guys very much. Once again...
It's wonderful. Great for the city.
I appreciate all of the support and confidence in me, and I will not let you guys down. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian, very much. Okay, with that, we'll have a report on closed session from the city attorney.
Yes, thank you. Council members, there were three items on this evening's closed session agenda. The first was an item of real property negotiations involving APN 035141-33, which is the area of the parking lot behind the City Hall building. The council met to consider a proposal by Verizon Wireless to locate a cell tower at that location and the terms of such a proposal. The council did not take any action on that item, but did conclude that at this... Yeah, thanks. The council did not take any action on that item, but did conclude that at this time, the council is not interested in locating a wireless communication facility at that location. So those negotiations were concluded this evening. There was also an item of labor negotiations involving all of the city's employee organizations, the Association of Capitola Employees, Capitola Police Captains, Capitola POA, confidential employees, Mid Management Group, and Department Head Group. There was no reportable action on those negotiations. Finally, there were two liability claims, the claim of Sandra Fowler and the claim of Barbara Stevens. Those are on this evening's consent agenda. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. There were some additional materials that were distributed tonight. Are there any other additional information? Or just the package was here? There is a studies on health effects on cell towers. And there is a letter from residents in the Fanmar Cherry area regarding cell towers. And another letter from the Sentinel. This is additional information. Are there any other additions or deletions to the agenda?
Staff has no other changes.
And at this time, we'll like to open up the forum to public comments. This is a period where you can come up and address items that are not on the agenda. You'll be allowed three minutes to speak, and you can come up to the podium and sign your name. Does anybody like to come up and address the council at this time?
My vision's not good after reading this. I wanted to share a letter from... When we come into this chamber, you've heard before, the wireless internet really makes people feel not well. And some people don't come because of that, which I think is a shame because with elected officials and city government, you want as much public input and participation as possible. There's a lawsuit in Portland, Oregon, and I need to find out the present status, brought by a father against the school district and to remove the Wi-Fi from the school because of the harm of the radiation to his daughter and other students. There was a declaration submitted, not only by public health officials and medical professionals, but by Barry Trower. And he says that he is submitting this declaration in support of a preliminary and permanent injunction opposing Portland Public Schools... enjoining, is the word he used, Portland Public Schools' use of Wi-Fi. Now, what's so fascinating about Barry Trower is that his expertise is microwave radiation weaponry. And he worked in the British Secret Service in the sixties and seventies. And he's come out of retirement free of charge to warn people of the problems because, he said, "These are the same frequencies and power densities that he learned to use and used in the military to blow up weapons and to debilitate people they considered the enemy." And one part I memorized, he said, "With thirty different pulse modulations, they could affect about fifty different aberrations in physical and mental functioning through entrapment." There's a whole section in here on children and the damage to children who we know are more vulnerable to toxins than adults. And this is like the first time through eons of time that children and people are exposed in every stage of development, from the fetal stage to... every stage of development to these microwave radiation frequencies. It's also a huge factor in killing the bee population. And I'll leave you with one copy of this. I was gratified to hear people are watching the documentary, "Take Back Your Power," where you see many of these scientists on the adverse effects. So I'll leave you one copy of the Barry Trower Declaration and copies on mobile communications, the cause for the global disappearance of the bees.
Thank you, Marilyn. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the council?
Hi, my name is Diana.
Welcome.
And I just wanted to address the issue of microwave radiation, which is going to be affected by this proposed Verizon tower. I did an antenna search today for this address, and within four miles here, there are twenty tower structures detected and a hundred and eighty-two antennas found. And they're ranging from this immediate location to... from sixty feet to two-hundred-and-thirty feet. The cellular one, Santa Cruz, is the closest one, sixty feet away. This, to me, shows that there is already very powerful radiation at this point, even without the tower. And my view is that we not have the Verizon tower here. There's numerous articles written about locations all over the country, in California, citing that the cell towers are actually bad for business, bad for revenue from property taxes, decreasing property values. When realtors disclose that there are cell towers near a beautiful home, buyers actually will drop the purchase price by two to thirty percent. It's becoming such a public health hazard that it's affecting many layers of our society. And in this room right now, I have an electrosmog reader. I'm actually getting some pretty high readings. This is a meter that picks up... I won't keep it on because it's very loud, but it picks up microwave, ambient microwave radiation. And this is what our bodies, our cells, our brains... There's all kinds of documented research showing acoustic neuromas are skyrocketing, pituitary gland cancers are skyrocketing, testicular cancer, ovarian cancer, all kinds of immune cardiac disorders, reproductive dysfunction, DNA disturbances. The list goes on and on and on, and we are all being bombarded, and it's a very serious issue. And I think we all have to take a step back and realize what's going on and put a stop to it. There are options, and this tower can be relocated. But my basic point is, we already have such high levels of this that it's unnecessary. And it's not always about the money, but it's about what's right and our health. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council at this time? Come on up, Gail.
You get much more nervous when you're at this side. Hi. Good evening, council. Good evening, staff. I'm Gail Ortiz, Riverview Drive, and I'm here tonight to talk about the library. Not anything that's on your agenda, but something else. I'm on this current ad hoc committee, library committee, and I was on one previous to this, so I have some experience with the library. And I was talking with Susan Westman and Barbara Gorson, who are also on this committee the other day. And Susan had a very interesting proposal. She suggested that we look at extending the quarter percent sales tax that sunsets in 2017 to help fund a new library. To do that, I know the council would have to put that on a future ballot, but I... we don't see there being any problem with that. There is enormous support in this community for a library, and I think it would be very successful. To date, we, as we all know, we've collected two million, $2.7 million for a library, but in today's value, that's not going to build us a very large library. If the voters extend this sales tax for five years or more, we could build a library that we could all be proud of and have it large enough to not only have library facilities, books, computer rooms, things like that, but meeting rooms that are really, really needed here in our community. So I'm hoping that you agree with me on this. The county isn't... I believe that the county is not going to extend our commitment to them to build a library by June of 2018. I think they're gonna hold our feet to the fire on that. And waiting for a county-wide ballot initiative, I think, is really dangerous for us. I think we need to step up our game right now and come forward and decide on our own plan. With your permission, I'd like to ask Jamie to place this on the agenda for the ad hoc committee for its January 20th meeting, so that we can begin discussing the possibility of that. of that, and possibly bringing a recommendation to you, the council, about, you know, if and when that might happen, and I'm hoping there's a little bit of support for that. I think that ballot initiative would be a really successful one. Scott Valley built their own library, and I don't see why we can't. I think it's a really good idea. We'd get exactly what we want, and I think this community really wants to come together for something like this, so.
I just have a couple of questions. How much input are we going to have on the library design?
Total.
Okay. And size?
Total.
Okay. And exterior, that's ours, the exterior design elements, etc., landscaping?
And the interior as well, because we have designers who will be experienced with library building, planning, and of course, we're going to have to, and I'm sure that council member Termini can speak to this a little bit more succinctly, but I, but we're going to have to follow countywide library uses. You know, they have certain stacks that they want us to use, certain furniture they want us to use, that kind of thing, so that it's standardized throughout.
Do we have to buy new furniture?
I think we can discuss that when the library issue comes up. We're going to be talking about the library.
And I'm not the best person to ask about this.
Right, yeah. The proposal you have there is for a tax measure to be placed on the ballot, and we appreciate you bringing that.
To extend the current quarter percent that will sunset in 2017.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks for that suggestion, Gail. Is there anybody else in the public that would like to address the council? Seeing none, we'll close the public forum, move on to city council, treasurer, staff comments. Any staff comments?
Staff has no comments.
City treasurer?
So it seems the public's been given some misinformation in regards to Measure O funds, and I just wanted to see if maybe the staff would, or if we could put on the agenda for the next meeting, maybe a little report, just about the Measure O funds, what's come in, what's gone out, how that's been spent, so.
That's something we can bring to the next meeting?
I think it is something we can get relatively quickly. I think we track that information, so it'd be easy to prepare a quick report on the topic.
Just an overview on Measure O, what's being brought in and where it's going? Is that what you're looking for?
Yeah, it's been mentioned in the reports, but it's kind of been buried, so I just want to just talk about that.
Be specific. Sure, great suggestion. Any city council comments?
Yes, I'd like to thank the city select committee, the mayors of the various municipalities, for appointing me to the board of the Monterey Bay Unified Air Pollution Control District. I will enjoy every moment of every meeting. Thank you.
We're going to get to those boards, and I figured you could say that afterwards, but now that you've...
I can do that, too.
You can do it. You can do it again. Councilor, any comments?
I just have a press release that I received that I passed on to the city staff today. As you know, we're going to be putting a new sewer line in. It's called the Noble Gulch Trunk Line Relocation Plan, and it's going to start at the other side of the freeway in SoCal, and comes down through Brookville Terrace, and come down here, the part of the Mobile Home Park. Anyway, it's, the Alma Lane, Carl Lane, Brookville Terrace, Monterey Avenue at Washburn, will be subject to traffic delays with potential lane closures between the hours of 8:30 a.m. and 4:30 from January 9th through January 30th, weather permitting. I'd say, don't hold that as a hard and fast date, as we've seen. These delays and lane closures are necessary for potholing and for sanitary sewer improvements, and we have a name and a time to call for any questions or problems or any issues for that. So that's just the beginning of this project that they're going to be just starting on. It's going to be extensive, and, but it'll be, it'll be good.
For the city manager, when we did the extension on Park, even though that wasn't our project, we didn't notice everybody, and we learned from that, that even though this is not our project, we'll be noticing everybody in the Brookville area for any work going on?
Might be able to get some clarification from the public works director. I do know that they have a community meeting scheduled for the Brookville Terrace community that it will be, that they will be holding to kind of brief everybody on the project.
Yeah, and we're also, they're looking at their traffic control now, and we're probably, this is just for some potholing that they're going to be doing.
Okay.
There's going to be large impacts like there were for the Park Avenue. We're addressing those now, and I will condition it that they notify all the property owners on that, before we do the, any...
Okay, that period will probably be longer, like the Park Avenue one, also, yeah. That's expected. Okay, just want to see where...
We're kind of looking at possibilities of the lower part of Monterey being closed, while they build a sewer in there, so we're trying to work our way through that.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, next we move on to boards, commissions, and committees, and we're going to carry this on, item 10D, later at the end, so we'll go past that now for committees. Brings us to the consent calendar. This is a group of items that have already been through the process, and they normally are voted on as one block. Is there any council member that would like to pull any item on the consent calendar? Is there anyone on the public that would like to address any item on the consent calendar that they'd like to make a comment about?
I'll move consent.
Second, just a question. Could I get a cup, could you send me a copy of the original agreement for D, the Architectural Design Services contract that we had in a couple years ago for the library, for the design of that? I just wanted to see what the scope of services was, or what the work plan for that was, the original agreement?
So, as clarification, there was an agreement with Anderson-Broullay that we entered into kind of in the death throes of the redevelopment agency, you'll recall. It was a half million dollar contract to design our library. That contract was never consummated. The contract was never allowed by the Department of Finance through the dissolution of the redevelopment agency, so it was terminated, no work was done on that contract.
Okay, I don't need to see it then. Thank you, thank you. Never mind.
Okay, so we have a motion.
Remember it, that's why.
We have a motion and a second on the consent calendar. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Motion carries unanimously. That'll bring us to the general government public hearings portion. First item on the agenda is to receive a future library location recommendation from the ad hoc library committee. From Rich.
Good evening, again. Thank you again, Mr. Vice Mayor and council members. This item is to receive a recommendation from the library ad hoc committee regarding the site location for a future new library in Capitola. Just as, by way of background, the ad hoc library subcommittee was established by the city council in 2009, and were charged with considering library facility needs and design options, and to review potential sites for a future library. At that time, the funding pool was limited to $2.6 million that we set aside with the county in redevelopment monies, and based on that, it really limited the number of sites that the committee looked at. Ultimately, the committee in 2010 recommended the current site where the library sits today. In 2012, the county initiated a master planning process, which was ultimately adopted in March of 2013 to create modern facilities and provide improved library services. Within their master plan, they recommended that the Capitola's library be replaced with a new 12,000 to 15,000 square foot library, at an estimated cost of $10 to $13 million. To fund those improvements, the county has talked about doing a possible regional parcel tax measure that was discussed a little earlier during public comment. Those, if it was passed, it could provide Capitola with an additional $10 to $11 million in library funding, and that could be combined with the $2.6 million in redevelopment monies we have set aside. That ballot measure was initially planned to occur in 2014 or 2015. Unfortunately, the library joint powers authority voted this past December to delay a vote until sometime in 2016. So we reconvened the library subcommittee in 2014 to again reevaluate potential library sites in light of the possibility that we would receive more monies and maybe have other sites in play. As part of that process, we did some public polling to get an idea of the location factors that are most important to our library users. As a result of that polling, we found that 50% of the respondents indicated they have used a library within the past year, and 75% of them indicated that they use the Capitola branch most frequently. In terms of location factors, the items that were identified as most important to library users were parking, and then access to the library, pedestrian and bike-friendly facilities, existing transit, and then a little bit further down, proximity to schools, and being near the center of town, and retail along 41st Avenue. So the most recent library ad hoc committee search for, or evaluation of sites focused on city-owned properties, primarily to eliminate the need for any land acquisition costs. Ultimately, the committee studied two city-owned sites, the current site and the city hall site. As part of that process, the committee did develop a pros and cons list for each site. The table is shown here. I won't go through the details. It's also in the staff report, but I think in a nutshell, the current site was viewed as the best site. People are familiar with it. It's close to multifamily housing, good access, and the committee just felt that that would be a better site, and it couldn't get tangled up in a larger civic center project if it were to be cited on this property. So the library committee recommendation is for the city council to select a current library property as a site for a future new library, and our recommendation is simply to accept the library committee's recommendation, select a site, and then direct staff to focus our planning efforts for a future library at that particular site. And that concludes my staff report. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions to the council on the report? Questions? Questions? If there are none, I'll open it up to the public. Is there anyone from the public that would like to make a comment on the presentation?
Library ad hoc. One thing that wasn't mentioned was, and that I feel is really important, is that I think the library placed there, where it is now, is really good economically for Capitola, because I think people tend to aggregate their errands, given our traffic problems in Santa Cruz County, and they're going to decide to come to our library and go to 41st Avenue, or vice versa, and I think it's going to drive, you know, more business to 41st Avenue. The bigger library we can get, it's going to drive more business to 41st Avenue. I think that's another really good reason to locate it there. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Anybody else from the audience like to make a comment on the library? Seeing none, we'll bring it back. Who'd like to start?
Well, as your representative on the ad hoc committee, you may be interested to know that our library sees only a third of its checkouts and visits from people in Capitola, another third from the people in SoCal, another third from Live Oak and other unincorporated areas, for the reasons that Gail Ortiz mentioned. It's on the path of travel, on a commute path, the path of commerce, and it's on the right side of SoCal Creek to avoid a lot of the traffic issues that we have in our village. It would be a lovely idea to have it part of a civic center on this side, but it's just right. It's near a lot of families. All the people in the avenues love it there, and in spite of the fact that we may have to acquire some land, I think it's the right place for our library to be.
Well, we sold those Kaufman and Broad homes with a brochure that said, "Next to the library in a tot lot," and there were people that bought there for that reason.
Yeah.
And they really wanted to be near the library and near the tot lot. Took us a long time to get the tot lot in. We finally did, and I have to thank Kirby for letting me cut the ribbon, even when I was off the council, because I harped on it for so many years to when we can open the tot lot. So it's just kind of, it's kind of a project that we did. It's a successful project. It's a library tot lot next to, you know, multiple housing that we did, infill housing, and, you know, I think it's a nice project, and it works, and I think a new library there will be lovely.
Great, thanks, Stephanie. John? No comment on the library. Interesting. I've got a few perspectives. I have a couple of concerns. I seem to be a proponent of the library at the civic, city, city center concept, and my concern is, is that today we're short one council member, specifically the mayor, and after some recent events last year, I kind of thought that if we're ever going to make a big decision, which I consider this to be a big decision, about picking a site, because it isn't like we're just receiving the recommendation tonight. We're actually supposed to pick a site. And I believe we should all be here when we make that decision, especially when I don't see a direction positively one way or the other. So it would be my suggestion to this group that we continue this to the next meeting, till the mayor returns.
I'll support that.
I'd move that we accept the report.
We can, I think that we can accept this report without breaking ground on a library. We don't even have an architect. We have a city architect after the consent agenda, but we have yet to plumb the depths of the challenges of the site, but I think that accepting the report won't set anything in stone.
I don't have a problem with accepting the report, but what it says here is, "Receive the ad hoc library's recommendations, select a site, and direct staff to focus efforts on that site." So there's two other parts that are pretty specific.
Well, Dennis does sit on the ad hoc committee as well, and, but I would never even consider speaking for him.
Or would I?
As close as we are. So we could certainly, and I'll pose this to the city manager, we could receive the report and wait till we get a little further down the road to actually put a stake in the ground.
Mr. Mayor, council member Termini, so part of what had been driving this, I think, was that the prospect of a regional ballot measure going in June, and we were really trying to be able to nail down a site and put together some material to maybe show voters what the site could look like with the new library on it. So some of the need behind that is, has passed, so I think some of the pressure to make the decision tonight has abated. Your next council meeting will have the overall sort of civic center concept on it, so we could easily punt it out to that, to that meeting and have a conversation about the location then, if the council would so desire.
You know, I understand where you're coming from, Ed, because I can't imagine anything he would say that would change my mind, only because I am just committed to kind of finishing what we started, and we started with a really lovely infill housing development there that was promised to be next to the library and the tot lot, and I think it's, you know, it's not fair to, you know, change that. It could change the horse in the midstream, sort of, and that, you know, now it's going to go away, and, you know, it's just, it's a loss to them that they, that I don't think is fair when they, when they bought there. Now, you know, maybe a lot of people have changed, you know, and sold their houses, but there's still a bunch of people there that are, that are still there, so that's, I mean, it was a package deal. That was a, if you, we should get, see, in the planning department, we should get a copy of the old brochure for when those homes were sold, and it was next to the library and a tot lot. That's, that helped to sell it. These cute little brochures that you can buy your, your new house for, I think they sold for $220,000, and there was a lady who slept in her car the night before because she wanted to be the first to buy one, and she came here and told us that. And that was, they were affordable housing in Capitola, brand-new homes, and some people said, "Why did you let Kaufman and Broad come into your town and do that?" Well, there were people that wanted them. So that, I mean, that's just, you know, I mean, I'd love to hear what he has to say, but, but it's, you know, it's just a promise to the community that that was, that was just a development we were going to do.
I would propose making a motion on the first portion, and then trying to make a motion on the second and see if it goes anywhere. So to begin with, if you would, Mr. Mayor, I would like to move that we receive the ad hoc library committee's recommendation and report.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, that motion carries, and part B?
I would like to make a motion to direct staff to focus the library planning efforts on the selected site being the site of our current library.
Second.
I call for discussion.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Appropriate.
Yeah, I would like a full board to support this. Oh, sorry.
When we make that vote, I think it's a very critical vote. Actually, I'm for the library site, but I'd like a full board to be present at the time we make that vote.
I think the comment, Stephanie, I wasn't intending to change your vote. I think just based on events from last year, the lesson I learned was, if we're going to make a vote that is of serious nature, it's a good idea to hear from everybody, and your vote could be the same, but I would never speak for Dennis where he stands on this, and I don't know that there's a consensus here. That's the feeling I get. So for me, since there is not, there's no urgency because it's not going to be on the ballot, and we have no means for this to move forward, I think we can afford to wait two weeks to involve all members of the council, so.
Do you, do you feel that it's still potentially a site for the library, being the civic center? Because my feeling is that it's so far in the future, and it is so expensive that, and remember, there's a, there's a fuse on this money. We have to build this library and finish it by 2018, or the county could take our money.
The redevelopment fund you're talking about.
Right, right. So we open the doors to the library in 2018, or we no longer even have the 2.6 million. Just somebody, I know that, you know, spending money because it's going to go away maybe doesn't always make sense, yet... doesn't always make sense, yet this site is so perfect, it's served the community so well, and it's been thoroughly vetted by the subcommittee, that even with only four of us here, it's, it's worthy of a vote and acceptance.
We can absolutely, we can absolutely vote on it. Yeah, I just heard in the discussion that it might potentially involve acquiring additional property, which means there's more to it than just the existing site that we possess.
It, it will, in fact, hold a 7,000-square-foot library as is, without any acquisition. If we wanted the, the 10,000 to 13,000-square-foot library, that would require extra land. So, there is the ability to meet our commitment, which is for a 7,000-square-foot library, and then build it in such a way that we could acquire land down the road and build it larger.
We could, no, we don't have to acquire land. We could do underground parking like that great proposed development at Mariner Cove.
The underground parking, yes. Okay, at least we're above sea level.
Yeah.
We can go ahead and vote on the measure. If you want to repeat the measure, can we?
It is to select the site being the current library site and direct staff to focus library planning efforts on this selected site.
There's a second.
And a second from Councilmember Harland. Sue, I would like to have a roll call vote on this one.
Councilmember Harland?
Aye.
Councilmember Bertrand?
No.
Councilmember Termini?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Botter?
No. So, Mr. Mayor, in a situation like this, it's the mayor's prerogative to continue the item to the next meeting.
Unless someone else wants to make a?
Unless someone else wants to make another motion or try to, try to compromise.
Jack, if you think you can make another motion to get three votes, go for it.
I'll make a motion that we continue this item to the next meeting.
I'll second that.
Sue, can we have a roll call vote on that?
Councilmember Harland?
No.
Councilmember Bertrand?
Yes.
Councilmember Termini?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Botter?
Aye.
Motion carries three to one. Brings us to the next item, which is a, receive a report on special events, highlights, and issues of 2014. Chief Escalante.
Good evening, Mr. Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. Rudy Escalante here, Chief of Police. Every year, at the end of the calendar year, I give a report on our special events and how they proceeded through the year, if there were any issues that brought up, what new events occurred, just to kind of give you an overlook as what happened through the entire calendar year. As you know, we have a special event permit program, and we divide them up between general special events and minor special events. And the distinction between the two are, general events are usually attended with more than 200 attendees, while minor events is less than 200 attendees. On the general special events, if there's a major impact to the community or major road closures, obviously, those have to come to the council. In 2014, we had 13 general special events and 11 minor events. There were three new special event, general special events. Those were the Monte fireworks show, it was the open streets, and there was a Surfers' Path 10K, 5K run that occurred along Cliff Drive. And so, those were the three new events. All three of those did come before the council, and they were approved. During the year, we had several minor events. One that is not going to come back is the motorcycle show that was occurring at the mall. The Chamber actually holds that event, and that is a decision that they've decided not to make to come back. Other than that, we had the car show, the regular events, and they seemed to be very well-attended. The Art and Wine Festival, the Begonia Festival, all of our regular events that went off without any issues. We had some minor changes to one event. It was the half marathon. What we did, there was no change in the path. It was just that we had to put somebody right there at the entrance to the wharf so boats could come through. It seems there was notification that didn't go through, so we wanted to make sure that boats were able to get through, and the only one that did come through was before the race started, so it really wasn't much of a problem. In regards to the wharf to wharf, there was some confusion regarding some parking for the guests from the Capital Hotel. Three cars were towed from the Upper Village lot. I think we might have resolved that problem. We did work with the Capital Hotel to try and make sure that their guests are properly notified when that event occurs. And then the Mermaid Triathlon, they actually added some extra barricades to try and make sure they protected the bikers along, and runners along the way. The new event, the Monte Foundation fireworks that occurred in October, we estimate about 10,000 people attended the event. We got a lot of positive feedback from people. We reached out to our community via social media. We sent out mailers to the Depot Hill residents. What we did was, we followed the path or the road closure similar to that of the wharf to wharf. We thought if we had a similar style closure, it would be something familiar, and therefore it'd be easier to get people in and out. That seemed to work fairly well. We actually had a lot of people show up on bikes and on foot, so we really didn't have much traffic. The plan was to close roads at 7:00, and the concern about, and why we wanted to close the roads was that if the traffic got backed up up on Cliff Drive or any other roads coming in and out of the village, once the show started, people just stopped their cars, get out, and just leave them in the middle of the street, which creates a fire hazard trying to get fire vehicles and emergency vehicles in and out of the village if something happened. We scheduled that for 7:00. We actually closed them about 7:45, and that really seemed to help mitigate any of the problems. We're going to look at redesigning some of the exit points on the parking lots. We think we can get people out faster. It seemed it took about 15, 20 minutes to get cars out of the parking lots. We were hoping to try and improve on that a little bit more next year. We did contract with the City of Santa Cruz Fire Department. We brought their fireboat down, had it next to the wharf just in case, and that just made us feel a little bit more comfortable. Again, we received a lot of good reports from community members in regards to traffic and the show overall. Just to let everybody know, the Monte Foundation has contacted us about a date for next, or this year's event. Again, we're looking in October. That seemed to work really well for us in mitigating the overtime and the pressures that it puts on the village. It is towards the end of the special event season, so to try and avoid that event fatigue from the community members and staff of all the events that they have to go through seems to be a good way to go. Other than that, we did bill for police and public works overtime. We collected approximately $29,000 in special event fees and reimbursement for police and public works overtime. And with that, that concludes my report, and I'm available for questions.
Great. Any questions? Your decision to close the esplanade during the nautical parade was brilliant. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
It made it a lot safer from where I was standing, and I, I have a pretty good vantage point. You know, having no traffic whatsoever on Stockton and closing off the entrance to the esplanade during the nautical parade made it feel safer. I think the people were more relaxed, and, you know, looking at, and I'm very much a special event guy, you know, in Capitola, we have never been in better hands than with our chief, so, thank you.
Amen.
Thank you. One thing that we do as a police department, we do, do an after-action report. We try to meet with the event promoter, see if there were issues that they might have recognized that came up so that we can make changes. If there are any major changes, especially to a general special event, those will come back to council. So, even though an event occurred on a day, a Saturday or a Sunday of this year, if it's going to change, that's something that will come back to you if, if you so desire. And so, we're, we're going through some of the process now, but the after-action reports that we meet with the event promoter seems to really help us for future years, and we continue that process.
Stephanie, any questions?
Do we still have church service on Sunday morning down there in the esplanade?
We actually had some conversation with them. It was on the beach. There was some issues about whether the permit actually covered several days, and so we're going to work with them to make sure we avoid some of those issues.
Was it amplified, amplified music or sound?
Uh, no, it was actually repetitive every Sunday when, in fact, it was only meant for one day, one Sunday.
Yeah, okay.
Jack, any questions?
Yeah, in regard to the Monte. One reason why it was discontinued and then brought here was because the increased policing charge that the state park, I would think, imposed. So, how do you think that's going to be moving forward here?
Well, for us, we actually were able, because of the time of year and the fact that we didn't have any extra events associated with the fireworks show, in the past, the Monte Foundation had all kinds of booths. They have entertainment. There were schools that were coming down and participating. That added to the cost. All we had were just the fireworks, and that's, was something that, based on the size of the city, was something that suited us well.
So, we might be at a capacity and might not increase as much as it did before?
I don't think we, we would have the room to, to start putting up tents and doing a larger event, and then, as Mr. Monte, I believe, talked about last time, was that that was not something he was interested in pursuing.
Okay.
Is, is there a specific date chosen by the event coordinator, Mr. Monte, for this year's event?
They were looking at, I believe it was Saturday, October 10th, but again, if there's a change in that, we would obviously be bringing that back to council.
That's the date he's requesting?
I believe that it was that date unless I'm misstating that.
Yes, so it was held on the Saturday, second Saturday in October, and they have indicated that they would like to do the fireworks show again, and they would like to do it on a Saturday. And so, you'll, you'll recall that the purpose behind this hearing tonight is to provide a summary for the council of all the major special events that occurred. And with our new special event policy, the city manager, police chief, we can issue, reissue special event permits for, for ones that have been held successfully in previous years, and this is your opportunity tonight, is if there's any special event that did take place this year that you'd like to see before, you know, it's authorized again next year, or if there's some specific thing about the way it operated this year that you'd like to see fixed next year. So, that's the primary purpose of this hearing tonight. So, if there's concerns about the Monte family, Monte Foundation, now's a good time to bring them up or direct us to bring it back at another hearing.
Yeah, let me see if anyone from the public has anything to say, and then we'll bring it back for council discussion. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address any of the events that are planned for next year? Seeing none, I'll bring it back. Does anybody have any comments?
I'll move acceptance of the report.
Second.
Stephanie, any comments? I have one concern. I've been in contact with the business owners in the BIA, and they've expressed that originally this event was to be on a Sunday. And because of the conflict with the wedding on the wharf, the event was moved from a Sunday to a Saturday, and it had BIA support with the Sunday date, and if it was going to be planned this far in advance on a Sunday, I think it would at least be fair for us to have, have that on the agenda and let that community come and voice their concerns and maybe have Mr. Monte address that also.
I think the BIA needs to embrace the wharf house to make sure that between now, setting a date, and the time that it's actually done, that they don't book the wharf house, because that's what happened last time. So, they need to speak in concert, and then we can do, because I'm in favor of doing it on a Sunday. I totally understand the rationale, but if one of their members, you know, reaches for the, for the rental income, and I can't blame them for that, there's not much we can do.
Would we be able to put that on an agenda item, or how would we go about that?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Termini, so, so, they have asked for the Saturday, and I think because of the sensitivity around the date that occurred this year, and because I do know that the BIA has said that they would like to see it on a Sunday, I did encourage Mr. Monte to get together with the BIA, and, and I indicated to him that I thought it was entirely likely that we might continue the discussion about his date to the next meeting, and, and he's prepared to try to have a meeting and come to consensus with the BIA about what the, what the day would be, and we could put that on the next, the next agenda.
We do have nine months.
We do have nine months, but do keep in mind that they have to get permits from, like, 15 federal agencies, so, you know.
He was able to get those permits in a timely fashion. Worried about the wedding on the wharf conflict, and so, if we could expedite that somehow, would we go ahead and put it on the agenda for?
We, we have, we have a relatively light agenda. We've just added two items, you know, I, I, I saw that potentially coming into tonight's meeting, and we're okay at this point. We can, we can put it on, and I do know that Monte is preparing to show up and, and give us a presentation on the 22nd about why he's ready to go Sunday or stay on Saturday.
Can we get resolution between Monte and the BIA prior to it becoming an agenda item so that we're not spinning our wheels?
That, that was the direction I gave him, is I said, "Look, you know, the best thing is for you to show up here and, and, you know, number one, I told the BIA, my recommendation is, is that you step up and become partners in this process, and then, you know, you and Mark are going to be on the same team because you're working together." And I told Mark, you know, "If you're asking for one thing and the BIA is another, you're putting the council in a tough spot for a great event." So, I've, I've asked all the parties to, to play nice, but I...
I think the expectation that he should come and make a presentation, and we'll make a decision at the next meeting.
Okay.
Well, I think, but, but I think if, we should decide whether we want it on Saturday or Sunday. If he's going to say Saturday only, and, and the BIA says only Sunday, then where do we?
Well, no, what I'm saying is if we, I, I don't feel equipped to vote on saying, "Yeah, absolutely," to Sunday because of the BIA's request, and I understand it, and he could easily go along with it, and then in June, the wharf house gets booked for a wedding, which is what happened last time. So, I need to see the wharf house standing there saying, "You've got the wharf that day."
I think that Mr. Monte should come prepared to satisfy all the questions we could ask, such as...
Ask him to make a deal before he comes here. Make a deal with the, with the parties before he comes here.
Do you have the wharf house people here too?
We don't, no, we don't need to have them here. He needs, he needs to talk with them.
Monte needs to secure it so that...
To talk with them and make an agreement.
That it's, it's closed. Remember, we have to close it for two days, right, for setup and for blow up.
They really want to do that rather than a barge?
Yeah, the barge is not financially viable.
I think it worked fine last year. I think it just, there's just the notification and bringing all the players involved, so if, if the challenge, Mr. Monte, is to come to us in two weeks, make a presentation, satisfy our concerns, that's all we can ask for.
Satisfy everybody else's. Come, come, come with that already taken care of, because we don't want, yeah, we don't want to have a meeting and then say, "Well, now you have to go talk to them." That's a waste of our time and, and staffs and everybody's.
Then, we don't need to take a vote on that, or?
So, so what you would be doing tonight would be receiving the report on the 2014 special events, and then we'll be agendizing, looking just specifically at the date.
And maybe ask the mayor to call him and just make that, that request very clear.
We can absolutely do that.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
We need a motion or just receive the report?
You're fine just receiving the report. I can work with the mayor to make sure that we get the direction and get it on the future agenda.
Great. Okay, this brings us to the consideration of renewal of the Santa Cruz Tourism Marketing District, the TMD District, and adoption of a resolution. Is there a staff report?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, I have a very short staff report for you this evening on the TMD renewal. You'll recall that several years ago, Tourism Marketing District was formed in this county that included Capitola to help fund marketing efforts for the CVC. Those funding efforts have really paid off over the last several years, where there's been a, CVC has seen a real bump in regional hotel stays over the, over the number of years. In fact, that the first, the first TMD assessment, this is a charge on hotel rooms, hotel room guests, and the funding is used to help, as I said, advertise this region, was so successful, the first version of it, that the, the TMD was expanded several years later to expand how much money was collected from visitors. The, what's before you this evening is essentially granting consent to the county to include Capitola in a regional tourism marketing district should one be created. The goal behind this new TMD is to take the two that were previously formed and collapse them down into one, and then extend it out for 10 years. The Lodging Association has requested the Board of Supervisors and all the cities to do this, and Maggie Ivey from the CVC is here this evening if you'd have any questions or would like to hear from the CVC themselves.
Great. Thank you for that presentation. Any questions?
No. I'd always love to hear from Maggie. Bring her up.
Stephanie, any questions?
Chuck? Can't sit through this much of a meeting and not get to talk to us.
Hello, Maggie.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, and I did bring some gifts for you. Nothing too expensive, but just something to be helpful. I'm happy to answer any questions about the Tourism Marketing District. As Jamie said, this is essentially an extension of what we've been doing for the last five years, and in a sense, self-funding now, which is fantastic. I think that the relationships are maintained with the city councils across the county, the Board of Supervisors, it's still a community effort and a partnership, but now it is self-funded through the hotel assessment, and I think it's a nice partnership where the better we succeed, the more our communities benefit as well, and every time we sell a room, you get 10%. So I'm happy to answer questions. This was timely, yesterday, we had delivery of the 2015 Traveler's Guide, which is the 20th edition, and of course, there's a beautiful section on Capitola and all kinds of information about the community, so I brought you copies. Also, for the second year in a row, we've printed the annual events photographic calendar, so I encourage everybody to hang this up, because of course, it's full of all kinds of special events from Capitola, and as Chief Escalante was reporting, all of your signature events are here. So I wanted to pass those out, can I give those to the clerk?
Thanks, Maggie.
And I want to thank the council for your continued support, and also recognize the partnership with the Chamber of Commerce, and the Business Improvement Association, and Capitola Village. It is a true partnership, the events that happen in the community, and your beautiful village, and the beach is, the beaches are fantastic, and it's just, it's a wonderful community to promote.
We have a new restaurant across the street that just opened.
I'm sorry?
We have a new restaurant across the street that just opened.
Oh.
A little Mexican restaurant closed, and it's a new restaurant.
Well, we'll call on them and try to get them to be part of the program.
Have a comment, Mike? Sure. Maggie, first of all, thank you very much for this. Next year, I hope to see our Wednesday night concerts actually included.
Were there, you want them on the cover, or?
On the calendar would be very nice.
They're in the calendar, the Twilight?
No.
Twilight concerts?
You missed them this year.
How much do we have to pay you?
No payment necessary, I'm sorry, I thought the Twilight concerts...
Not the sailboat races, thank you very much for that. Next year, maybe we'll go for the Twilight concerts, we'll even give you the bands well ahead of time, so that...
Fantastic.
Anyway.
Progress.
It's, we're making progress, but everything you do helps Capitola, thank you very much. The tier process, I understand it. How much of an increase are we seeing this year over last year?
It depends on the type of property. So there are four tiers that have been established, and actually, a lodging committee put this together. Last time around, it was based on the number of rooms at any given property, which really didn't take account for the type of room rates they had, and they're always thinking, you know, percentage of my rate, so now it's based on RevPAR, an industry standard, so revenue per available room. Some members of the community would be, or some lodging facilities will go from $1.50 to $1.75, they could be at 2 or 2.25. They have been paying either $1.50 or $2. The top end is $3. That tends to be the very high-end boutiques and the full-service hotels only, yeah.
So under a dollar increase per night, for sure.
On average, absolutely, yes.
And I noticed that we also rolled in the smaller B&Bs. Is it going to take any more effort on the city's part to monitor this and collect the money? Because that's always the area that we've had a challenge with on our TOT. How challenging do you think it's going to be for the TMD, and by extension, the city administering it? It's a question for both of you.
Well, I don't think there are any new properties in the city of Capitola, if I'm not mistaken. The Bed and Breakfast were only those with less than six units, and the Inn at Depot Hill has more than six units.
Well, it's five or less rooms, so we could see a lodging business with a single room being charged TMD, would we not?
Well, it does not include individual vacation rentals, but if you had a, I don't, yeah, if you had an inn with one room, it would be included, but I don't think that is the case.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Terminy, so we do, we collect this on behalf of the CVC, and we get, I think we get 1% of the total amount as repayment. We've taken a look at that, and in general, we feel that we're adding, we're making up our staff time, we're getting paid for our staff time associated with it. The collection, as you point out, from the individual, the individual vacation rentals is the most difficult and challenging thing. The piece behind this is that people pay with their TOT, they pay the TMD, so realistically, and we don't have to bird dog the TMD, that's not, that's not part of the deal.
Well, it's just that now, if I read this, even the vacation rentals are the minimum TMD of 1.75, so we've encompassed pretty much all the vacation rentals in this, and they're the ones that we have the hardest time getting TOT from, so I would imagine that they'd be just as hard to get the TMD from as well.
Well, the only vacation rentals involved with this are the vacation rental management companies, so actual organizations that are based out of Capitola. So Beach House Rentals has been in the TMD and will continue, but you have one central collector who's paying the TMD along with the TOT for that organization, on those individuals.
So the difference being, if I owned a house in the transient occupancy zone and rented it out on a weekly basis, I would not be collecting TMD?
Correct.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Great, thanks, Maggie.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public like to address this issue? Seeing none, we'll bring it back.
I'll move the resolution.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries unanimously. And it brings us to a review of city council representation on various county, multi-county boards, commissions, and committees. Do you have a staff report?
Mr. Mayor, this is always one of my favorite hearings, and it's usually one of the most difficult to track. So we, staff has taken another approach to this than we have in previous years, and I put together a little bit of a worksheet to maybe help guide us through this process, to see if maybe it can simplify it a little bit, because I know it's been challenging sometimes to keep track of everything. So if you'd like, I'm happy to help walk you guys through the various committees, and who we have up, and where the decision points are, if that would be helpful.
Feel free to take the cursor.
Okay.
We'll try to go along.
All right.
Be cursed.
So I will keep it relatively brief, because I know everyone's seen the staff reports and seen everybody's recommendations, or everybody's applications, but what I'm going to do is, is I've got for each one of the individual committees, you can see on the left who's currently sitting, in the middle here, who is applied, and then the seats that need to be filled. So the first item that's up for you this evening is the Ark and Site Committee. Derek Van Alstine, as you know, because we gave him a certificate of appreciation this evening, has asked to step aside. Frank Fenton, who's been the alternate architect for Ark and Site, has offered to move in as full-time. The landscape architect, Craig Waltz and Carolyn Swift, are both reapplying. And across the street, our friends over at Fuse have offered to serve as the alternates to Ark and Site. So in this case, you have four positions and four applicants for the positions.
Would the best way to approach this is to just have a motion to accept the entire appointment, or would it be...
In this situation, I think that that's probably a logical step, would be a single recommendation to, or motion to basically move everybody, all the applicants and incumbents over.
So moved, and on this, I know that Frank is doing this reluctantly, I know him personally, and he's a great guy, and he loves to serve, but given the, we'd rather not, maybe, we might want to reach out to Pam Anderson, who is, lives in Capitola, and is also an architect, and is of great renown, and that maybe she'd want to fill in if Frank wants to step down at some point in the future, but for now, I'm in favor of moving this whole slate.
Second.
I haven't had a chance to interview Daniel or Daniel. I talked with one of them, I don't remember which one it was, so I'd like to have a chance to talk to them before I vote.
Okay, so we'll hold off on that. Okay, so we'll have to hold off on that until we have the alternate.
Are they having a meeting in the meantime?
Well, they're the alternates, so, yeah.
They're alternates.
But I mean, are they having a meeting in the meantime, so that we can, so that we will have an architect there?
Well, we can do the first three and hold off on the alternate then.
Right.
We approve the committee and not the alternate.
Right, well, that's what I just wanted to ask.
The only reason I went for the whole thing is I know both Daniels, but I can hold back on that one, I'll amend my motion.
Would one of them be interested in being the regular member rather than an alternate?
They would very much like to. And they're, and they are highly qualified.
Well, then why, then why would we appoint Frank tonight? Why don't we appoint one of the Daniels?
Because they have applied to be the alternate.
That's what I'm saying, would they like to be the main person?
And maybe, and Frank would easily step back, but maybe for now.
Let's check with them and see whether they'd be interested in being...
A little confused from the staff, because...
How soon do we need to have this done?
I'm looking at my community development director when we need an appointment, and I know he did speak specifically with the folks over at Fuse about their role as alternates, so he may be able to shed some light on their interest in the full-time gig.
There is an Ark and Site meeting next week. If Frank were appointed, he would sit in that capacity, and the alternates really wouldn't have a role, presuming that he could attend, and I don't know any reason why.
I guess my concern is the surprise appearance of this Frank Fenton not wanting to be on the committee.
Well, no, I'm just, the supposition, because he's always been willing to step back into the alternate position whenever someone else steps forward, so, you know, we don't need to do that. I think that just the first three names for now are just fine, and then we can...
Well, it was an issue before because he did a lot of work in town, and so he had to recuse himself. So we've always been kind of looking for someone else that lived in town but didn't do a lot of business in town, so there wouldn't be that conflict of interest.
For the purpose of this next meeting coming up, it seems like doing what we have here is good, and then we can, you know, press the Daniels for a change in the committee afterwards.
Would you be okay with the three on the committee, so they could have a meeting?
I'd be fine with the whole thing, and then we can, yeah, I just wanted to have a little discussion about it and see where we are.
So you would be okay with the whole thing? Okay, so we have a motion and a second, so all in favor of the appointments to the Ark and Site Committee?
Aye. That includes the Daniels, by the way.
Okay. Opposed? None? See, that carries unanimously, so we can go to the next committee?
Isn't it Daniel, Daniel and Daniel Prime? No? Okay.
But I think, but I think we, somebody needs to do some work, that may be the mayor or you, Ed, if you want to, since you're the acting mayor tonight, if you want to do a little work and talk with the Daniels and see where they are, and see whether one of them might be interested, at least for next month, not the next week.
Let me ask this, when is Mayor Norton expected back?
Next week, I believe. We can, you know, the Ark and Site Committee is, you know, primarily staffed by staff of the city, and, you know, we have a good relationship with the architects, we work with them, we work with them on all the projects, so we can have a conversation with them about, you know, their interest in being involved in the future, and I think, I think more than anything, they were interested in helping, they're right across the street, obviously, and they hadn't, you know, they don't know exactly what the commitment would be, so if they can get a little bit of exposure to it over the next year, I think...
They were going to move too, are they planning on moving soon?
You know, I don't know their long-term plans, I heard that initially, but I've also heard that they're real happy here, so.
I've heard they're happy.
Yeah. My recommendation at this point would be, you know, let's move on from Ark and Site, we've got four, let's see how it goes, and if over time, there's, you know, they're really interested in being involved, as Mike indicated, I think Frank would be willing to step back.
Well, then we have others too that we can look into.
I think Dennis would be probably suited to have a conversation with any of them, that's one of his fields, so.
So this takes us to Ark and Site, there's three appointments.
Art and Cultural.
Art and Cultural. Excuse me, Art and Cultural. Michael Terminy is the current council rep on Art and Cultural, Joyce Murphy and Jenny Skelton are at large members who are due up for appointment. The Ark and Site Commission has recommended both Jenny and Joyce, and Linda Smith is the current PC rep, and the PC will be selecting its representative at its next regular meeting to sit on the Art and Cultural Commission. So what you need to do is choose a council member to sit on Art and Cultural, and then my recommendation would be to confirm the recommendation from the Art and Cultural Commission to appoint Joyce and Jenny.
Do we have a motion to accept the members for the Art?
Well, I'd want to appoint someone different than what's on here.
There's no appointment to Art and Cultural, it's by application.
Just by application.
Right. So we don't have individual appointments to...
Okay. There's no councilman appointments.
Okay. Well, you can promote someone to apply, that's for sure.
It's too late now?
We're always ready for new people, trust me.
So there was a motion?
Second.
And a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries unanimously.
I'm sorry, who was the motion maker? Harlan and...
Motion was Harlan, second.
Terminy.
Terminy.
And then, as far as the city council representative?
It's as on the, Mike Terminy.
Oh, so Mike has been reaffirmed?
Correct.
All right.
That was the motion, yeah.
Yeah, the motion was to continue with, continue with the recommendation.
Okay, thank you, that's what I understood.
So this takes us to the Commission on the Environment. There are a number of different seats, there's the council representative, and then the other four council members who aren't sitting on the committee get an appointment. In addition, there's a PC representative, and then we in the past have had an ex officio student representative. Two of the, no, three of the four appointments have reapplied, that includes Bruce Arser, Kristen Sullivan, and Amy Forrest. Elizabeth Russell has not reapplied to sit on the commission. In addition, Peter Wilk and Tyson, I'm going to mess up the name.
Scott Rupp.
That, Tyson applied as well, so you have three applicants, and there are two open seats. So what you need to do tonight is to appoint a council member to the committee, and then the remaining council members to make appointments. And I know that the council spoke about not wanting to speak for Dennis Norton, but I will tell you that he is willing to let go of this appointment if another council member is interested, he's relayed that to me, if another council member is interested...
Will he serve if no other council member is interested?
The way he phrased it was he was willing to let go of it if someone else was interested.
Then I would move that the mayor be our appointment once again to the...
Well, I'd be, I'd be interested in...
Oh, you want to do it?
Yeah, and, and there might be a couple people that are interested.
Exactly, so Jacques, would you be interested in being on this, as a council representative to this committee?
Just heard Stephanie say she would.
I'm just asking for interest, okay?
I'm interested.
You're interested, Stephanie?
It's yours.
Okay, see, sometimes there's more interest than others. That's why Stephanie inquired. So if Dennis would like to back out...
I was just giving precedence to you.
Yeah, if Dennis would like to back out, would you be willing to take that position as a council representative?
Oh, then I will, I will move that, appoint that recommendation. Jacques?
But if he doesn't back out, then...
Well, no, he has indicated, yeah, he's indicated. So we're okay with that, is it just whether was anybody else willing to step up?
Yeah, and I'd like to continue this, because I haven't had a chance to talk to a couple of the applicants.
And I'd like to continue Amy Forrest as my appointment.
Okay.
Stephanie, how come I don't see an appointment there for you?
Kristen Sullivan.
Oh, Harlan's, okay.
Yeah.
So, okay, but you're continuing to be...
Because I haven't met Tyson yet, and I haven't met Peter, I mean, Peter was here, but I haven't met Tyson yet.
You don't have an appointment, you've already got your appointment, these are the two appointments by the other council.
No, I have an appointment because I'm...
She can change her appointment.
Oh, did you want to change?
I don't know, I haven't, I haven't met the applicant yet.
Doesn't know. Oh, but Kristen, oh, okay.
I haven't met the applicant yet.
Oh, okay. Because are you willing to make an appointment? Oh, see, no, Jacques's on the committee, so would he still make an appointment?
Right, no. So now, this would be...
Would need to make an appointment.
Yeah, so that will be continued to the next meeting, because Dennis isn't here.
I can go ahead and make my appointment at this time, though.
Yes.
I'll be appointing Peter Wilk.
Okay. Nothing like typing in front of an audience. And so, continued, Stephanie?
Yep.
Continued, continued. Okay, are we right?
Takes us to the Finance Advisory Committee. So the Finance Advisory Committee is a little bit interesting, the mayor and the vice mayor are designated representatives on the Finance Advisory Committee, however, another council person can sit in their stead. In addition, the city treasurer, Ms. McBroom, sits on the Finance Advisory Committee, and then the remaining council members who aren't sitting on the Finance Advisory Committee have the opportunity to make appointments. The current, let's see, I believe all of the current representatives who sit on the Finance Advisory Committee have all reapplied. In addition, Peter Wilk and Sandra Erickson have both asked, have both applied to sit on the Finance Advisory Committee. Currently, the position that was occupied by Sam Story is vacant, that was the council member, and then Michael Terminy sits, has been the, I believe was the vice mayor's designee on the Finance Advisory Committee.
And I have been asked by the mayor to be his designee on Finance Advisory, so I
And I have been asked by the mayor to be his designee on Finance Advisory, so I do not get an appointment. So I am sitting.
Correct, and Dennis will continue to make an appointment.
Correct.
Correct. And in that vein also, I, I would like to designate, uh, Councilman Bertrand to sit in my place.
Okay. Okay, uh, so then Dennis has indicated to me that he's willing to have Mike be his appointee. But so, so, so we'll have to get Dennis as appointee here, uh, find out who that was, is going to be. And Stephanie, do you have?
I would like to reappoint Mr. O'Sullivan.
Okay. And I apologize for using first names as I'm typing here. It just seems to be a little bit quicker. And then this will be, uh.
Correct.
Right?
Correct.
Okay, and so do you have, did you have an appointment?
Re- retaining Gary Snelson.
Oh, okay, okay.
Correct as it is.
Okay. Okay, so then, uh, this is, Dennis has continued here. And, uh, we're good.
We're good?
Okay.
Did we get a motion on that or we, or we're continuing it or how?
We're good.
We're good.
We're good. When you guys have an individual appointment, we don't need a motion. Uh, so the historic museum board, no action is needed at this time on the membership. You'll recall, we made a couple of appointments recently. The library ad hoc committee, uh, we can review the membership at any given time. No action is needed today on that. Takes us to the planning commission. Uh, you can see that we've received applications from all the incumbents. Uh, McRuth was Sam Story's appointee, so, uh, I guess we can just go and see who everyone would like to appoint.
Um, I'd like.
Go ahead, this is our U.
Yeah, I'd like to appoint Ed Newman.
Okay.
I will reappoint Linda Smith.
I'll reappoint Ron.
Okay.
And I'll reappoint, uh, TJ Wells.
And.
We have word from, uh, the mayor?
Yeah, that's interesting. I got a lot of opinions about, I got a lot of different positions, but, uh, he did not mention, um, the planning commission.
Okay.
Did you?
Continue that.
Um, Madam Clerk, did you happen to pick up a preference for him on the, on the planning commission?
No, I did not.
Okay, well, we'll check in with him when.
Aloha.
When he gets back.
He may want.
Yeah. Okay, so that takes us to traffic and parking, which is probably is, is one of the largest committees and the most appointments. So there's, there's two village residents, Margaret Kinsler and James Stephen Ross. Both of them have reapplied. There's two business owners, Caron Hannah and Gary Wetzel have both reapplied. And then each one of the council members has, uh, an appointee to the, uh, to the commission. The, uh, um, Vicky Muse has reapplied, who's, uh, council member Harlan's appointee. Nellis Westman, who's council member Termini's appointee, has reapplied. Linda Hanson, John Margarell and Molly Ordin have not reapplied. Oh, sorry, Molly has reapplied. And then the new applicants you have are Peter Wilk and Mike Lee.
Stephanie, would you like to retain that?
I'm not sure yet, so I'm going to, um, continue.
Continue, okay, great.
Councilman Termini?
You may continue Nell's for me.
Nell's continue.
So, I'm sorry, did you say continue or appoint Vicky?
Continue.
Continue.
Okay.
Fine, is to appoint Nell's.
Appoint Nell's, thank you.
And I think we have a, a letter of resignation from John Margarell.
We do. Well, he didn't reapply. He pulled himself out as an applicant for this time. So Dennis has indicated, is Dennis up? Dennis has indicated he'd like to appoint Ron Burke.
Okay.
If that's acceptable.
All right, been there before. Jacques, do you have?
Uh, Molly Ordin.
Okay. Did you catch that?
I did.
Okay. And, uh, my new appointment is Mike Lee.
Okay. And then would, would the, the council like to continue over the village residents and the business owner representatives who all reapplied?
I have a question here. Um, I don't know if it's the proper time to talk about this in terms of what the committee does and its makeup. And, uh, my consideration before the council right now, and I would like to wait till Dennis is here, but my continuation, uh, my question is, um, we've been focusing on the city, uh, the, the Espinon area. And I'd like to expand the purview of this committee to the rest of the city and not so fo- not be so focused just on the Espinon and the village. Okay, and so I think about, we're doing some work on Claire, uh, for the com- uh, for the calming. Uh, we have Park Avenue, uh, Lee is out there, so that's actually covering that. So in a sense, I'd like to, uh, expand it or rearrange it. Forty-first is an obvious one to me, you know, that needs to be attended to. So, you know, I'm asking, uh, the, the mayor here and the council, what, you know, is this a reasonable thing to address? Maybe not right now, but at some later date, because basically to, to reiterate, I think we're too focused on the village. I think we need to start looking at forty-first. Claire's is coming up. This, this discussion came up when, you know, I was interviewing Joe, okay, Joe Clark. And he said, you know, I'd really like to be on the parking commission, you know, I was saying, Joe, you know, would you like to be involved in the city? You know, you've obviously stepped up, you, you're very successful in the campaign. You didn't win, but that doesn't matter. You got a lot of support, right? Uh, he wants to continue in the city and he said, what would you like to do? And I started thinking about, after you said parking, I said, you know, he's right. We should look at other parts of the city here. So I'm just putting it out for discussion. I don't know if it's a good time to do it or what.
I don't know what it would take, but I, I would be very much in support of that, perhaps two at-large members from the avenues.
Yeah.
You know, get the other side of the creek, because traffic and parking exist over our entire city. You're mentioning Joe Clark, perfect example, but I think expanding this committee so it looks at the entire city's parking and, and traffic issues.
My recommendation at, at this point would be probably to make, make the appointments to the committee. And then what we can do is we can come back at some point this winter with, you know, looking at the parking and traffic mission. Cause I think the commission has been around for five years now? Five, and I think the original purpose of the commission was looking at, um, the meter rates.
Right.
And so maybe taking a look at what its charter is and then looking at what its membership is. And we can do that probably at an agendized hearing where we have that on the.
I think we should agenda. We should actually come up with some new goals, whatever those are, for the parking and traffic mission. And if that means incorporating different representatives from different parts of the city, then we can amend the committee at that time. But you're, you're right, I think the, the committee has gotten a little stale and it's, uh, it'd be good to come up with some new goals for them. How soon will we get that, uh?
We're not going to do it next meeting, I can tell you. We've already added, I think, four items to that, that agenda, so.
Next couple of months or, or are you thinking longer?
I'll, I'll defer to the public works director who's been meeting with the power, traffic and parking for a number of years and he might be able to offer more insight and.
I know they meet every, uh, couple of months.
We actually meet next week and then we don't get meeting until March, so why don't we aim for February to try and have this discussion? And, um, we can actually get some input from the committee members too.
That would be great. Is that reasonable from February?
I think that should work, either the first or second February meeting. I haven't, uh, looked at them.
Bring it up and discuss in February.
And have the village residents and business owners all expressed interest in staying on?
Yes, they did.
They did.
Yeah, these guys have all reapplied.
Yeah, it's not to say that I don't want them. I just like to expand.
No, no, it's a, it's a very valid point. It was, it was a good suggestion.
Absolutely.
Okay, so are we going to hold off on making these folks, appointing them and are we going to?
I would say we should approve.
I think we should appoint them.
Okay.
Since they've expressed interest, they've been on it.
Right, we're just going to continue until, uh, the next meeting or if Stephanie can, uh, come over the next meeting. For, um, and Vicky Muse is still your choice?
Um, I'm going to interview people, so.
Oh, no, yeah, that's, that's fine, yeah.
So I'm going to continue my.
Yeah, we've got you continued.
On my point.
Yeah, okay, everything else, everything else is fine.
Just so I'm clear, are, are we moving over Margaret James, Caron and Gary?
Correct, the first four all move over.
Thank you.
So Vice Mayor Botorff, I was just wondering if we need a vote on the, the village residents and the village business owners?
We should probably vote on those four. I need a motion.
So moved.
So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries unanimous for the, uh, for collective appointees.
Okay, so that takes us to the Wharf Working Group. Uh, there's two council member appointment, two council members that sit on this group. It's currently, uh, Councilmember Termini and Councilmember Norton and so.
Motion, second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Sorry, who made the motion?
Somebody.
Uh, Councilman Bertrand made the motions, second by Termini.
Okay.
Prove unanimous.
Okay, the area council, uh, the advisory council of the area on aging, seniors council. Uh, Councilmember Harlan is your representative and you do either.
Okay with that?
I'm, I'm, I'm an alternate and, and.
Oh, you're the alternate, I'm sorry.
Mr. Carlson is the representative and is he interested in continuing?
Yeah, no, he's, he's still active.
Interested in continuing?
Yeah, you know, I think he's still, his term hasn't expired, so he's still on. So the question is, who's the alternate?
You're good there, okay?
Yeah, that's good.
We're good with that. Next is the Arts Council.
Arts Council, Councilmember Norton and not to speak for Councilmember Norton, but he said he'd like to stay on as the city's representative.
Okay, that's good.
Okay, so that takes us to Ambag. Currently representative is, uh, Vice Mayor Botorff and.
I'm okay there.
Okay, and Councilmember Norton indicated that, that, I don't have the notes on that one.
He indicated he could be replaced.
He's willing to.
He's willing to give it up, but.
Give it up.
Rarely is an alternate needed there.
I say his name belongs there.
Yeah.
Well, no, and, uh, Jacques might like to be the alternate.
No, no, I, I cannot be an alternate.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
There's never a need for someone to make that meeting.
Okay, Capitola Public Safety Foundation, Councilmember Termini has been the representative for a number of years on.
Are you still happy to be on? Okay, that stays as is.
Feeling safe.
Community television, uh, we haven't had any apps, um.
I'll be glad to take them.
Let's keep advertising.
Jacques, would you be willing to take that council member?
Councilmembers are not allowed to be on their board. I already checked.
Oh, really?
Yeah, I was interested in it years ago and they said they'd love it, but they, they, their bylaws specifically say not an elected official. They want citizens on their board. So let's keep advertising.
You want to keep advertising or are we?
Have my name off.
In and then out.
I could offer up a staff person if necessary.
Okay.
Do you want to do that or do you want to keep advertising?
Keep advertising also, and if a staff person can go to their meetings, that'd be wonderful to just to go to see where they're going and to.
Maybe our new assistant to city manager would be available.
You can bet that that's would be an assignment that would go that direction.
Okay, good.
I knew he should be.
Right, he's not.
Yeah, he's not here. He's in Hawaii. So, so I'm clear.
He's in Hawaii.
We're going to continue to advertise.
Correct.
You know, it has been, how long have we been advertising it?
Probably about five months.
That's all right, that's all right.
I'll talk it up.
I mean, the scroll, the scroll has been off and, you know, people don't.
We, we will make a decision soon on that.
Okay.
Like I said, we, I, I think we have a couple of interested parties, at least one.
Okay.
Who's vacationing.
Okay, um, the CJC, the Criminal Justice Council.
Criminal action, uh, Community Action Board.
Are you okay there, Councilman Termini?
There's no actions needed at this time. I don't think any of these, uh, positions are expiring.
Correct.
So that takes us to the CJC.
You're good there?
Justice America League.
That's fine. Is it good that way?
He's good.
So we, uh, and.
Tights.
Okay. And do you want your city manager to continue as the second city rep?
Correct.
Okay. Uh, LAFCO, no action is needed at this time. When I, when I say that, it means that there's a, you know, it's a multi-year term for these positions and, and so that there's, they don't need to be appointed. So, uh, Councilmember Story did sit for the, the region actually on the APCD. And as Councilmember, uh, Termini pointed out yesterday, the city select committee appointed Mike to, uh, fill in the remainder of Sam Story's term. So the continuing, the city of Capitola will continue to be represented and represent the Santa Cruz County on the APCD. So congratulations, Mike.
Congratulations.
The meetings are in Monterey.
Yes.
And then the Santa Cruz County Children's Network, there's two positions. Councilmember Story was the representative and Councilmember Termini was the alternate. So we need a, we need a new rep.
No, but I would like to know what they do. Could we have someone report on that? Because I remember we used to get their agendas and I really don't know anything about them. So could we have someone, uh, at, at some future meeting, report on what they do?
Uh, we certainly can do that.
Next meeting.
I'll report on it if you make me the member rep.
How about, how about you make Mike, Jacques the rep and then he can give an update at a.
No, no, he's, you would be interested in being the rep?
Yeah, no, the supervisory bylaws I did some research.
Councilman Bertrand would be interested in filling that capacity.
And then he can keep us up to date during oral communications.
Yes, perfect.
How about that?
Better than.
And, and Mike, how, how do you like, uh, being the, the alternate, uh, for the children's?
Never been to a meeting and, uh, would you bring your cape, keep up the good work? Only for the permanent.
Yeah, no, only ones.
Okay, uh, so that takes us to the county, county flood control district zone five.
And we're going to get serious with that this year and we're going to get maps and we're going to get it straightened out. And we're going to notify the property owners that, uh, they have these, uh, drains on their property. So they can keep, we can get them cleaned and the city won't have that flooding problem. I mean, I really think we need, this is the year to do it, 2015, zone five.
Has, uh, Mayor Norton indicated whether he wanted to remain on this committee?
He's indicated that he'd like to remain as the representative.
Okay, so be it.
Bring it up for discussion next meeting.
You, you certainly can bring it. I mean, it's on the agenda to talk about tonight.
He said he would do it?
He said he would do it.
I typed his name in before he calls.
No, he, he wants to do it.
He said he wants to do it.
Type his name in.
Right. If he, normally if he wants to do it, it doesn't come up for discussion.
Unless somebody else wants to do it.
Oh, no, it, i- i- it's up for discussion. You can appoint anyone.
I did some research on our participation for the last couple of meetings and so.
Well, then maybe you should step in and be the alternate.
I'll be glad to step in for the alternate. I didn't want to say that. I wanted to say.
I will ye- I will yield the alternate in the hopes of that there may be a change to permanent status, but, uh, how about that? Does that work for you?
That works for me.
Okay, and is Dennis, Dennis is in?
Looks that way.
Looks that way until, uh, they have a discussion.
All right. Uh, the Santa Cruz County Hazardous Materials Advisory Commission, you'll call this a position we were struggling with to get filled. And we reluctantly appointed our public works director.
We should reluctantly reappoint him.
No, I have some, I have some information that Councilman Bertrand would be willing to be on that committee. So that might be a win-win for both the public works directors.
Is there any, is there any ban? Is there any ban on council members sitting on this?
No, I was on it for years.
It should have been a council member. We didn't have one.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, yeah, no, it's, it's, uh, it's a, I thought it was a very interesting committee. And, uh, it would be, it would be good for a council member to be there.
Jacques, you willing to do that?
Uh, Steve, you owe me.
There you go.
Yep.
That's what we're going for.
Oh, it was good.
I, I, anything I get, anytime I get got Steve to help me, I'll just go.
All right, so that takes us to the Santa Cruz County Integrated Waste Management Local Task Force. Councilmember Harlan is your alternate and, uh.
You okay with that?
Okay. Danielle, okay, so Stephanie?
She's good.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've been going to keep up with things, but I'm very happy to be the alternate.
Good.
Okay, so then we have sort of two, uh, related JPAs. The Santa Cruz County Library Financing Authority and the Santa Cruz County Lib- Joint Libraries Joint Powers Board. The Library Financing Authority, I believe meets once and just takes all the money and then gives it all to the JPA board. The JPA board spends the rest of, takes the rest of the year to spend the money.
Say ditto, ditto here for you.
So in general, my suggestion would be you probably want one rep on both boards, um.
Yes, I will continue.
Continue, continue.
Okay with that?
So, okay, so then, but I can't continue Sam unfortunately on the financing.
Oh, it says Sam, oh, um, it should be the, uh.
I, I would suggest it should be the same as.
The Norton.
Yeah.
Put Dennis on both of those.
Why don't you, well, or ask him if he wants to.
Well, he's the one on other.
He's on both. He'd be on both.
He wants to continue. We don't know whether he wants to.
He said, so he said, uh, for the financing authority, he suggested Jacques as an alternate. And he said he, as the library JPA, he said he's willing to stay unless another council member wants to be the representative. So it sounds like if someone, my suggestion would be to have the same alternate for both because, uh, so my.
Do you want to fill in both alternates?
Huh?
Do you want to take over both spots?
Alternate? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, there you go.
Yes, I can hear the train.
Is that good?
That's good.
Okay.
The Sanctuary Interagency Task Force. Councilmember Harlan is your representative?
We haven't decided what we're doing, but I'd like to continue.
RTC, you missed.
Okay, good.
Oh, I missed the RTC.
Oh, don't.
Oh.
Oh, gee.
I cannot imagine our mayor giving that up.
Yeah, he told me it was fine, take it or leave it.
Really?
And if I let it go.
Come on.
I would be fired when he got back. No, he wants, but he wants on the RTC.
Okay. I'll, I'll continue to be his alternate.
Almost there.
How late in the night is this? It's early. I could hear him from Maui.
So is this what we're doing, here on the RTC? I'm sorry, I missed that.
Nope, that's good.
Okay, the Sanctuary Interagency Task Force?
As is.
Okay. Okay, the Sanitation District.
Okay. We need an alternate there, Jacque.
They don't have alternates.
They do, I checked. I'll be the alternate.
They don't, I don't think they, I don't think they have an alternate. And I think that's incorrect, though. The others don't have alternates, and I don't, and if there's not a person there, we don't have a meeting unless we have a quirm. So we don't, we could double-check that, but I believe we don't have it.
And Jacque would be the alternate if they need one, and if one's not necessary, then it goes with just Stephanie and Councilman Harland.
Okay, well, we will double-check whether or not the Sanitation District has alternates or not.
Are you okay with that? Yeah, that's fine. But I feel in question, with the question mark behind my name, that just makes me weird.
I would. The question mark should be, the question mark should be in the section for the rep, not whether it's, yeah.
Yeah, is that better?
There we go, better, yeah, good.
Okay, the Workforce Investment Board, I have generally sat for the city on the Workforce Investment Board. And no action is needed if we want to continue that, it's generally a staff board. Metro, Ron Graves has been the representative for Metro, and he's indicated he would like to reapply.
Oh, yeah.
Well, no, I'm taking over that position. I think, I think he gave his last farewell speech at the last meeting.
And he knows, yeah, and he knows, that was his farewell.
I was just surprised by the way he said he reapplied, because it's already in...
I was surprised as well. But I know he did give his goodbye speech to the folks at the RTC.
No, he gave the farewell, we've had the discussion, and the meeting's tomorrow morning at 8:30.
You're going to be there.
Yeah, and the letter will go out tonight.
I haven't typed your name very many times, Ed, have I?
No, no.
You're doing good.
First name's easy, okay.
And that takes us to the Regional 911 Board, I sit on that board on behalf of the city, that by the JPA bylaws, that's the city manager. The next is the Oversight Board for the Successor Agency, this has been managing the wind-up of the old RDA. Mike was the mayor when this formed, and he's been the mayor's appointee ever since. And then Katie Katan is the senior planner, and no action is necessary, but she represents the former employees of the Redevelopment Agency.
Are you okay with that?
Okay, that's fine.
Repeat.
Okay, so then that takes us to our, we had the, it's the Community Grant Subcommittee that generally recall would meet when we were reviewing the community grants, and make a recommendation to the council about allocating the funding. And you'll recall that last year, when we did the two-year cycle, council asked that group to take a look at the overall program and make some recommendations about looking at how it works. We did not meet in the intervening six months, just because we realized that Sam was going to be terming off, and we thought it was going to take longer than we had available to get through that process. So that's what this group is going to be charged with doing here over the next year, is maybe taking a look at our overall program and trying to come up with some recommendations on changes. Councilmember Story and Councilmember Termini were the two council representatives. Treasurer McBroom has asked to sit on it, and Councilmember Botorff, I know, asked to be the alternate. So at this point, we were looking for a couple of representatives.
I would like to move up to a permanent spot, if possible.
I'd like to continue.
Okay.
Nominate Christine McBroom.
Okay.
Need an alternate, council alternate.
Council alternate?
Yeah, I'd like to be on there also, but I'd be happy to be an alternate.
Okay.
Are you okay with that, Jacque? Yeah, well, no, I'm perfectly fine.
Okay, good.
Okay. And the last item on here tonight is the, it's not really a committee. It's just, in general, it's been tradition for the mayor and the vice mayor to meet with the school district, board trustees, president, and vice president, I presume is the title. I do know that the mayor has indicated that he'd be willing to step aside in that role if anybody else was interested in being, sitting with the vice mayor at those breakfast meetings that are occasionally held. So if anybody else, I think the vice mayor thought that he'd had a long history with the district, and maybe it was time for a fresh set of eyes to sit down in those meetings, so.
And they have new, they have some new people.
I enjoyed sitting on that, so I'm happy to be, continue, but welcome.
I would, unless Mike, because you have some...
There we go.
Okay.
I'd be happy to, if you can't make it. If you can't make it, or you're busy or out of town or something, call me, call me, yeah.
So Jacque and I, let's say, for the, for the, is there an alternate? Okay, then if one of us can't make it, it's very important.
It's very important, it's not, you know...
No, we will reschedule if one can't make it.
I just, you know, I wanted to bring it up because, you know, by tradition, then the mayor and vice mayor, Dennis and I talked about it, and he said he thought that it'd be better to have maybe somebody else take that role.
Excellent.
Okay?
Okay, good.
I don't know if this is the right time to bring it up, but I, I, I think the relationships with the school district are really critical for this community. I mean, going forward, I really advocate working as closely with them as possible. And I would like to see a discussion with the city council here, is maybe how the best approach that. And an open discussion, maybe with input from the community. I just don't know how to work that, but I think there's a lot of opportunities. We have lease agreements, so we have the rideshare program potential, I think that started last year, and we need to push that. So there's a bunch of things on the table, and if these are the things that are in the background, I'd like to, you know, have that discussion.
I'd like the mayor to write them a letter and invite them to meet with us for a study session at their convenience, in, in...
I think we talked about that last year.
Yeah, and identify some issues, and...
My recommendation would be that that breakfast meeting is a great opportunity to talk about, you know, shared interests. And the superintendent and I have held meetings over the years, and we've been able to advance a number of projects with shared interests. And I'm happy to attend one of those breakfast meetings if you'd like, and we can, we can have that conversation.
Which is fine, I mean, those have been great so far, but I think we need to bring it to the next level, which is the five of them, sitting down with the five of us together, identifying common issues that we need to work on, or expenses and projects, or where are we going in the future. And I think our two bodies need to sit down and get to know each other better, and learn how to work together. And we haven't done it for years, but we used to very successfully, we had great partnership, and I really like to get back to that. It'll take a while, it'll take lots of, probably lots of meetings, but one step at a time, we can build that partnership back up, Jacque, and that, that friendship and that support that we had, we can build it up again.
I agree with that, and I think the, the exchange of the gym was a great start. And I know they're benefiting a lot from that, and the students are benefiting a lot from that. And so, you know, I'd like to take that forward as much as possible, and flesh out the issues maybe at the breakfast meetings.
I think we could bring it up at the first breakfast meeting and try to suggest that meeting, that might be a good idea.
And they'll say, we'll call you, don't call us. That's why I think a letter from the mayor would be, would be appropriate to formally invite them to a, an informal study session, workshop, discussion, to talk about common issues, common problems that we need to work on for the future. Just very informal and friendly, and we can each identify some issues we want to talk about, and move forward, and just start having some meetings together. Because, I mean, the two and two is fine, you know, but you don't go, you don't go anywhere. There's no decisions made.
Right.
And it never comes, never comes to a meeting, because they don't, you know, they're shy about meeting with us. And I think we just need to get over our shyness, and, and welcome them, and we'll meet over there on, in their office, if they're comfortable. But an informal meeting together around a table, not this kind of stuff.
Right, I think the breakfast meetings were very productive, it brought us to the contract with the, with the gym, so I'm very hopeful.
That was between, that was between the superintendent and the city manager, that was, you know, the people didn't do that.
Well, I'd like to think it was a collaborative meeting, but, but eventually, the city manager and the superintendent got together. But I think if we suggest a meeting, I believe that the, the air right now is open for that. I think they will be receptive, especially with the election results and the way that the board is swayed right now. I think they would be willing to meet with us, so at least give us one meeting.
All right.
Give me and my new partner one meeting, okay?
But I, I think, I think, just...
Go ahead.
I think Stephanie's idea is a good one, because on one level, having you, Jamie, as our city manager, reaching out to their superintendent is a great, great way to start, you know.
And they've been doing it for years.
Yeah, so, I mean, I respect that conduit, and I would like to see that happen, as Stephanie suggested. And that could help set the stage in a, in a different way. And then if we get a chance to meet with their two people, Tor, whoever it is, you know, my neighbor Sandra, you know, I'd welcome that, too. But I think the main thing in general is, you know, we're two major components in this community. We have different purviews, but they intersect all over the place, and we have to work together.
I just want to be careful, I'm not sure, it's not, I'm not, anything on the agenda we're talking about, so I want to make sure we're not talking about items that we haven't agendized, or anything, there's no problem with that.
I, I think we were, water probably about as far afield as I was.
Okay, good, thank you.
Because we are doing committee selections right now, not strategies for the new year, so...
Okay, well, I'm the new guy, I just had to jump in on.
That's okay, that's okay. So is that our, have we come?
That concludes your committee appointment for this evening.
Okay, and there's no other motions needed for that, we're ready to move to the next item?
You're ready to move to the next item?
Okay, last item on the agenda is the appointment, reappointment of standby city council members. So...
Vice Mayor Botorff, I can make this staff report?
Great.
Mic's on, right? Okay. This is for the council member appointments of the standby city council members, and this is pursuant to, excuse me, to the Capitola Municipal Code, Section 2.04.165. And I can just kind of summarize that for you. And it states that the city council has authority to appoint up to three standby city council members per council position. And the standby city council member serves as the city council person in the event that a council member is unavailable in an emergency. And that's defined through the California Emergency Services Act. So we need to, I believe that all the council have, have reviewed their standby council members,